Up to you, Tony.
Okay, well, I'm gonna ask you some legal questions now.
Be good.
Go ahead.
All right. It is 6:30 on the nose. Good evening. We have a quorum of the Mud Trophy Club Board meeting, Monday, November 15th, 2021. Vice President Chapman is absent. Citizens comments, this is an opportunity for citizens to address the board on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The board is not permitted to take action on or discuss any comments made to the board at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The board will hear comments on specific agenda items prior to the board addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or the time limit determined by the president or presiding officer. To speak to an item, you must complete a speaker's form, a form that has the specific topics of your statement. Citizens' comments should be limited to matters over which the board has authority. Ms. Laurie, any citizens comment?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll move on. Reports and updates, staff reports.
Good evening, directors. I've got a little information for you on the Waterline Interconnect project. If you all haven't noticed, out along 114, the service road out there, contractor began boring two weeks ago, roughly. They've got about 1,400 feet worth of pipe laid out there on the ground, and they plan on pushing the pipe through the bore later this week and starting to do some open cut, bringing in a second crew, so they should start knocking that job out pretty quick. But right now, we're on schedule, and there's no major issues or concerns. Also, along 114, I don't know if you all have noticed, but we had well four go down. The pump on well four went down a month and a half, two months ago.
Yeah, I would say probably about a month ago.
So we've got that pulled out, we're gonna end up replacing that. But Mike said that after the inspection, there's some blockage within the screen, so we'll have to go in there and do some cleaning, which will be an additional cost, so we're looking at 35,000, 40,000 roughly on an estimate right now. So we'll bring that information or the purchase order to y'all at a later date.
When you say blockage on the screen, we're gonna go down and do some downhole cleaning? Is that what they're gonna do?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, take like a big scouring brush and go in there and
Yeah.
clean all the pores out of the screen. Also, lift station one, we have both access agreements secured. They are not a legally binding document, however, they are in place to where there's an agreement between both entities and have allowed us the access. So fortunately, I'm glad we have those in place because Friday night, we lost power to that site, and something happened within our generator, and we didn't have full power, so we had to bring a bypass pump out there and work on that. So thankfully, everything was in place, and we had no issues. That's one of our backup measures. So everything was pumping for about four or five hours.
Yeah.
Right? But anyways, we've got access agreements in place, so that'll help us during construction as well.
Do we have maintenance plans for those generators?
Yes, yes, we do.
What happened to it then?
We're not sure yet.
Broke, right?
It did. But we found out today, the, our generator contractor showed up on site. For some reason, it lost its third phase of power. They've got it up and running, fully functional now, but that is part of the upcoming project to rehabilitate that site, is put a new generator out there. Another thing I want to mention, too, is if you all didn't notice, we have the vision, mission, and goals implemented and installed on the wall today. We've got one in here, there's one version right here above the table, and then the most impressive one is out here in the foyer that I hope you all will take a look at and enjoy to come in. Laurie for overseeing that project as well, as long as four man, along, as well as, the four man furnace assisted us with the design of that, and then the Sinorama of North Fort Worth and Keller did an excellent job of creating that for y'all and installing it on the wall and getting it knocked out. He was having trouble finding some of the materials, but he went above and beyond to try to get that installed for y'all this meeting, so.
It looks awesome. It visually jumps out spectacular, so.
I was impressed with the turnout.
Really well done.
It looks really well. It looks really good, and I appreciate it. Other than that, I don't have much. Any other questions on reports?
I have just one quickly. I touched bases with you on it earlier, and that is the townhomes that are under consideration over off of Trophy Wood. I noticed today when I drove back in that our contractor has some equipment parked over there and looks like he's been cleaning that site, so I don't know whether that developer's been in touch with you or not.
He is not.
But less than an optimum result.
Right, understood.
Anything else on staff reports? All righty, thank you, Alan. Consent agenda, all matters listed as consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Directors and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Anybody like to make a motion? Bill?
I move to approve the consent agenda items A through C.
Okay, I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Kelly, approve the consent agenda items A through C. Any discussion? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Before we move on, Tony, I didn't officially welcome you, so welcome. Tony is our attorney extraordinaire, so welcome and thanks for joining us, Tony.
Thank you, happy to be here.
Item three, regular session, discuss the poss, discuss and possible action to authorize Denton County to waive the penalty and interest on delinquent taxes for parcel 726658DEN, Denver Echo Nancy, which is Quasar Hotels LLC. So when I looked at it, it seemed pretty straightforward. This request came from the town of Denton, tax collector directly, correct?
Denton County.
Denton County, Denton County. I know the name, as I talked to you earlier today, Alan, because that's where we all write our property checks to. So it seems pretty straightforward, I certainly have no issues.
I make a motion to authorize Denton County to waive the penalty and interest for delinquent taxes for parcel 726658, D is in Delta, E is in Echo, N is in November, Quasar Hotels LLC.
Second? I'll second.
Do we need to put the dollar amount, or, I mean, waive the delinquent taxes?
It's the tax year, I guess.
Say that again, the tax year, yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Motion by Director Carr, I seconded the motion to approve and authorize Denton County to waive the penalty and interest on delinquent taxes. The parcel number was read twice. Any further discussion? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Item four, consider and take appropriate action regarding two directors to serve on the audit committee. Mr. Rose?
I'll nominate Kelly to serve on the audit committee.
Okay?
Or myself?
Well, we're early in the game here, Kelly.
All right, I'll accept and I'll nominate Bill to be on the, serve on the audit committee.
Okay. Seeing no others, we, somebody like to make a, I'll make a formal motion that we approve and appoint Director Rose and Secretary Treasurer Casten Gay to serve as directors on the audit committee. All those in favor? It is unanimous. What are you doing over there, Bill?
What's his hand doing up in the air?
I don't know, yeah. Item five, consider an act regarding approval of employee health and ancillary benefits for the calendar year beginning January 1, 2022, and ending December 31st, 2022, and authorize the general manager to execute the necessary documents to implement board action. Let me pull, get to that. So the only question, well, I have a couple of questions.
Staff speak to it.
Staff, you wanna speak to it?
Well, what I wanted to do was have everybody look at the top section where it talks about what was budgeted based against the current base, the renewal base, 30,000 deductible plan, and $1,500 deductible plan. I wanted to make sure that that was clear to the board of what was being proposed. So during the budget process, one of the things that was discussed was how much it would cost if the district made employees' benefits a base plan of $1,500 deductible. So with that being said, this chart at the very top shows that difference. If we were to stay, and our current base plan is $0 increase, obviously, with the renewal at the $3,000 deductible, which is again our current base plan, you have a total increase cost of $308. If the $1,500 renewal becomes the base plan, that will be a total increase of $32,951 for the year. I would like to remind you all that the budget included $72,584 of increase for those plan increases.
So my question, and I didn't want to go any further, was, refresh my memory, how did we, how did staff arrive at the 72,584?
Based off of a 15% increase, and then there was another 15% assumption of increase if everybody moved to the $1,500 plan, employee base.
So the 15%, first 15% was just normal or?
Normal budgeting, yes, sir.
Increases in medical care?
Correct.
Across the board, okay.
But per these numbers, it looks like it didn't increase as much as projected.
No.
Yes, that's correct.
Just because we budget doesn't mean we have to spend it. And I think right now, they have a damn good plan at 3,000.
That's correct.
And vision and everything, that's my two cents. I think we just stay with the, what we have. It's 30.16 increase, is that correct?
Well, that's already, that's the budgeted number. What I think they're proposing is the bottom line number, the 32,951. That's what staff, right?
That's correct.
Staff is proposing?
You know, based off, when we went off the budget. And based off of the recommendations that the board wanted to see during the budgeting process, y'all asked us to go ahead and include the additional funding.
Yeah.
In the event, in the event that it came in low enough?
Yeah. I specifically requested for it because I wanted to see what it was. Last year, we discussed it, and we couldn't get there because it, the discussion died when it was unknown on what the cost would be based on the number of people who might take it. And so it died at that point last year. I think personally, I support the 1,500. I think it's a better, a better plan for our employee group based on their overall salary level. It cuts down their risk of exposure, and I think it's well within our capability, and I think it's something that should be done.
Well, the way I look at it, that if approved, there's two benefits to it. Obviously, the current employees, right? It's a benefit to the current employees because their overall cost is going down, and potentially it is a potential draw for future employees. Or, you know, when people come and you're interviewing potential future hires to the Mud District, this is a very, not only fair, but lucrative overall benefits package. So when I look at it, I look at it both those ways. Laurie, do you have any comments or thoughts?
Well, you mentioned the hiring. I mean, anyone that comes into a public service, they're getting the best plan already. They have dental, vision, life insurance, retirement, 401K matches, so I don't agree with that standpoint, but I, I just don't think, because you budget something on a forecast that someone puts in and says, well, I think it's gonna go up that, this much, and you have a good plan already at 3,000, shoot, there's very little people have 3,000 deductible nowadays, but saying that, just because you budget something and it doesn't go up, doesn't mean, oh, we have this money, might as well use it and bring the deductible down, or there's other things it went up to, like the dental went up a little bit, not much, but, you know, there's a little bit increase on every, everyone. I just don't agree with dropping to 1,500.
Okay. So before we, I mean, this is a whole package, so we gotta look at some of the other things. So I guess it's Alan, let's go over the rest of the benefit package.
If you'll go down to the employee dental benefits renewal summary, you can see where we had an additional increase of $2,000 for the year. The renewal come in at $1,108. We did have another quote for Unum Dental, but it's a fairly new plan from our understanding, and we're unsure of the, the benefits and the providers as part of the system. Plus, it also comes with a $5,000 annual cap, and that includes family coverage. The one that we're currently on with Humana has an unlimited per year, so that's why we would recommend staying with that if the board so desires. The vision benefits renewal, those are minor. It does show a $403 decrease if you go with Unum. However, it's our recommendation that with the ancillary, you stay with dental and vision as your primary in the same benefit category. So if you choose Unum, you go with Unum for all three categories. If you choose Humana, you stay with Humana on all three categories.
That also includes the employee LTD at the bottom?
Yes, that's through MetLife.
So that, so, okay.
And those are both rate pass.
And those are not the, the employee long-term disability and accidental death and dismemberment? There are no changes there? That's, those two aren't, those, there are no changes now?
Correct, they did a rate pass.
Okay.
It's flat for this year.
I'll make a motion.
Just one more comment. I have not heard of Unum before. Are they a fairly new player, or is that just a smaller?
From our understanding, they've been around for a while, but they're starting to become more prevalent in municipal benefits and.
Newer in this market here.
Correct, they're newer in this area. I think he said that he has more corporate entities that have Unum, but again, from our perspective, when you look at it compared to a $5,000 annual increase or a max versus an unlimited, if we can afford to stay on that plan and the board agrees with that, then we would prefer that.
Yeah, that's, that's a piece I didn't, I didn't know, so that, that makes sense to me, but I guess I would just encourage you guys to continue to look at them in years coming, and they're fairly new to the market, and they're gonna be competitive without, you know, that, your comment notwithstanding. Okay? Mr. Rose?
I move to approve the United Healthcare All Savers renewal at the 1,500 deductible for employee medical benefits and renewal, and the Humana Dental, Humana Vision, and the MetLife Long-Term Disability and Life Accidental Death and Dismemberment benefits for the calendar year beginning January 1, 2022, and ending December 31st, 2022, and authorize the general manager to execute the necessary documents to implement the section.
Okay? Second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? I will read, but Bill, you basically took the motion but put in their language to the $1,500 deductible issue and supporting staff recommendation to go with Humana on both vision and dental.
Yep, and added the MetLife at the bottom.
And add the MetLife, and the rest of the verbiage is fine.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? We have three, Director Rose Flynn and Casten Gay, Director Carr opposed. Motion passes.
I have a question.
Yes.
On the item for the audit committee, in the end, you made a motion to have Director Rose and Director Castenway serve on the audit committee.
Okay.
But I missed if there was a second.
Let's see if I wrote that down.
It was seconded by Rose, wasn't it?
Which item was that, Laurie?
It's the audit committee.
Number.
That's fine, you can, put me down for a second, I'll second it.
That's what I have.
Yeah, I had Rose, I had Bill doing that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Where were we? We are on item six. And I believe, Alan, you wanted to table that because we're not, whoops, that's the wrong one, sorry. Item six, consider and take appropriate action regarding approval of, this is the Dodge Ram, so this is.
Correct, no action on this.
No action, we're gonna table this? Okay. Item seven, discussion of possible action regarding solar options related to the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
Staff?
So if you all can make sure that you are on page 45, please, in the packet. So what we did, we reached out to our broker and a couple of external sources outside of our brokerage firm. What we did is we looked at the district's energy consumption overall annually, and just so you all can have an understanding of what we use, we use $4,500,000 approximately kilowatts per hour energy consumption, and that's brown energy, your standard energy source. So what we did is we looked at what our options are, the current market energy rate for renewable energy, which is either the district buying solar and then putting it back into the system, if you will, or decreasing our brown energy consumption. Then you also have it to where you can purchase renewable energy through a third party. So we have the solar panels on site, and then the other company oversees and provides operations of that system for us. One of those two, right now, the average cost is .0679 kilowatts per hour. I think our current rate is .0379, something in that range. I will say this, keep this in mind, next year, our rates are up for renewal, and there is a chance that we're gonna see a significant rate increase just because the market trend is high for energy consumption right now. So what we did is we looked at what the current solar market would be, that is .0765 if we went to a third-party vendor and had them oversee this. The solar panel installation, the numbers we received was typically about a dollar per kilowatt hour. So we have six acres of tree property north of the wastewater treatment plant. It would take six, all six acres to get 1.5 million kilowatts of consumption out of that. And going back to the top, we use 2,300,000 kilowatts of energy at the wastewater treatments plant, so you're looking at 51% potential consumption reduction, reduction. So that number is also a conservative, or not such a conservative number, I was told it could be 1.5 to 2 million just for the panels. That also doesn't include any kind of permitting, studies, engineering, tree mitigation, any of that. So there's a potential, I'm just gonna say, half a million that could be on top of that.
We don't have, we don't have tree mitigation if we use it out there.
Correct.
So, yeah.
I'm just making, making note of that. You have six acres worth of trees that you're gonna be tearing out, let me just say it that way.
That's true, that's true, and there's a cost to do that.
What's the return?
So currently, the return would be zero, actually, would cost the district more annually. The initial cost just for the panels themselves would be 1.5, and we assume a 1% to 2% escalation cost over an annual period. Also, these panels, they say that there's a life expectancy of about 15 to 20 years, and there's a slight degradation to them starting after year one, so we don't know what that exact number would be, but you, you'd have to remember that while you're spending 1.5 to offset half of your energy cost, you still have 50, 49% of brown energy you have to pay anyways. So the bar's at the bottom over 30-year period, Stephen kinda put some numbers together, and it shows that it actually will cost the district more if we were to purchase solar, solar energy and, or go with a third-party option.
After, after I got this, this information, it wasn't quite what I was looking for, so I went out and did some scrounging or some internet research, and I found a site that talked about the cost of development for solar energy. It was talking about $222,000 per acre, up to $500,000 per acre, and so I looked at the production off of that versus the, versus our demand and our cost, and what our payback would be on it, payback period, and what I come up with is we'd be saving about $100,000 a year in outgoing dollars for energy costs if we had the system. However, the payback period was 13.8 years at the cheap, at the, at the best return rate, and I don't remember what it was at the, at the cost of $500,000 an acre to develop. So I looked at that, I mean, if I had a return, if I had a, you know, had a return on it, a payoff return at five to seven years, I could look at something like that, but at 13, 13 and a half, 14 years on an optimum case, without fund grant, you know, without grants or something like that in the, in the system, I can't make a go of it. I mean.
I think you hit the nail on the head when you said, the thing that offsets it is grants. If you can get a grant or some sort of rebate, then, yeah, you can look at it, but as it stands right now, and as the future goes more towards, you know, saving the energy, there might be bigger grants available that would make this more attractive, but right now, I agree with you, it's not worth going down the road.
I thank the staff for the time.
If we had more open space, it would also be more beneficial for the district.
Put satellites up there.
Well, but, 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 I mean, actually, I mean, it, the only thing about it is, is the size, the actual size of the dollar, the buckets you bring back across. Even if you do it at this level, knowing you're only gonna capture 50% of what you could do if you had 12 acres, it still can be a benefit.
Correct.
But even at that, the 13 and a half, or 13.8 years payback on that, I mean, if I had clean dirt sitting out there, I'd probably get it at 13 and a half, not with trees and hilly, hilly soil and all that landwork that's gonna be done.
How many windmills can we put out there?
Yeah, we actually talked about that, and he was talking about if you can get FAA approval.
He'll have him chase it down windmills for the next meeting.
I, I think that the president's neighbors would be in his front yard with posters if he said he was gonna put a windmill out there. Yeah, no, and I'm not sure that a windmill's more efficient than the sewer panels, so anyway, it's, it's just.
During a freeze storm, they weren't.
So I just look at, you know, I appreciate the staff taking the effort to do it and coming back and giving us a shot, and we can say that, you know, if anybody asks, we looked at it, and.
So it's fair to assume that there's no further action on this?
Correct.
Not for me.
From what I'm hearing.
Not for me.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Item eight, discussion of possible action regarding remodeling the annex building, including potential action relating to approval of architectural and constructural, and construction services.
Okay. If everyone will turn to page 46, I would appreciate that. So just to give you all an understanding of a starting point for me to provide y'all some data today, what I did is I came in here and essentially, I figured out what the max amount of usable split space in here that we have is. If we were to pull these chairs out, pull the podium out, how much flat space do we have in here usable during any point in time? Roughly, we have 1,210 square feet in here that we can use, usable space. So what I did is we went over to the annex and determined what is the least expensive route to try to gain the same amount of square footage usable space. And so what you'll see on page 46, the areas where they're hatched are areas where we would pull the walls down. That open area would essentially give us 1,185 square feet, roughly. Now, the two red lines on the north end and the south end of the restrooms are load-bearing walls. Everywhere else, you have single-span trusses, except for right there in the middle where you have multi, multi-span trusses or compound trusses to allow for another vertical separation there for your MEP. So what we did is we worked through our architect, had them take a look at these thoughts and ideas, and on the second page, page 47, if you'll go to that one, where you see the outline of the building, on the northwest corner of the building, you can see where there's four existing parking spaces. The proposals that you see also include taking three of those and converting them to an ADA-accessible location, including a type-two ramp and signage as necessary. Down below on page 48, you can see a general scope and fee for Architectural and Engineering and Construction Administration Services if we were to continue down this path. And also, I had a construction company that I've worked with in the past that has, through a purchasing cooperative, has a job order contract. We had them come out here and take a look at this, and you'll notice that it says 1,500 square feet. On page 46, the entire layout, there's an area that's called a permitting room. The quote includes having to do some repainting, flooring, and re-grid location of that room as well, because with the addition of two fixtures within the bathrooms, you would essentially take the existing doors that are on the bathrooms and move them out to the, where the existing east wall is of the hallway. So this is what we came up with for you all to discuss. I tried to give you all a, a, a basis for conversation. Here's the usable space we have in the boardroom. Here's what the similar amount would be if we did anything over at the annex building. So with that.
So let me, let me weigh in because I kind of kicked this off last month. So all in, at least from an estimate standpoint, it's about two hundred grand?
Roughly.
Sixty-seven plus whatever the one forty-two, two-ten.
Two-ten, twenty-five.
Yes.
So that's a lot of money, I get that. And I think Kevin made a good point last time that anything we do down there needs to have an eye toward, you know, what, what is the long-term plan for that building? I don't think as we sit here today, anybody really knows that. It's an item I want to continue to talk about, especially in our January meeting or whatever that is. Not specifically related to this, but what, what are we going to do with that? What's the plan? Is there a plan? Is there not a plan? Because it's just sitting idle. So, you know, having seen these costs, I mean, that's a lot of money to do what we're doing. Place to vote.
That didn't work out too good.
What's, what's that?
The voting did not work out too good.
That's the second part I, I want to address a little bit. I mean, it was cramped down there. I, I was down there seven different times. And for the most part, it was fine because early voting was early voting. I think we probably exceeded expectations on voting day, especially since it was such a crappy day. It was raining, it was, and I forget the number already, remember the number of the people came on voting day? It was five hundred or so? I mean, there's a lot of people there. It might have been six something. We got close to a thousand, I know that. So when I got there at noon on voting day, it was, it was just way too cramped. And, and at that particular moment, there was a lady coming in, handicapped accessible. So she had to come around, which we could accommodate for, but then come in the back way, had to use that second room. I mean, it was just, it didn't work out well. So I guess what I'd like to, if this, we'll have the discussion about this, cost. And if that's tabled or we think that's not the best use of money, I would agree with that. But then what happens next? I think that's the second piece of the discussion we need to have.
Well, addressing the voting, I mean, I, why, my question is, why didn't we use this boardroom like we always did? Okay, and put someone down there? I had the same experience with the handicap person. It was that windy day, I think it was a Tuesday, the last week or something. And she couldn't open the door. And, you know, the wind was coming from the west and the door opens and she was having trouble. And then they're trying to get around that area, it was very difficult. And I'm just wondering, we've always used this. Number one, the town built their building outside Denton County, so that was a problem. And going forward, it's always going to be a problem because the town is outside Denton County when they have Denton County elections. That wasn't even a big election. Wait till they have a presidential or something like that. And the question goes back to who decided to put them down there? Wasn't ADA-approved, the bathrooms weren't ADA-approved? We have a security wall right here and there's locked doors. So they, we're going to come in the door, make a left and vote and then leave. They weren't going to disturb any people, I didn't.
The building is ADA-compliant, according, the, the building is ADA-compliant.
Oh, it isn't.
According to two thousand and five standards.
This building is.
And that one is too.
Lori can attest to it because they send the thing out that, okay, what part is ADA? We had to do these bathrooms to make them. Those bathrooms are not ADA. That door going into that room is not ADA, ADA. There's no handicap parking in front of that room. They had to park up here and go down a ramp to go in there.
That's how they were able to get those.
The building, one hundred municipal drive, yes. Since they're attached to us, yes. You can say, okay, this building is. But you have buildings that ADA people or handicap people can go through. They can't go to that building. That's the point.
So the question was brought up, or the opportunity was brought up to the county. Said, we have this empty building. We know that this is not going to be a high-turnout voter situation like last, last November. Last November's election was presidential. We had it in this building, there's no way to accommodate it anywhere else. So we knew that the county had approached us and said, we're going to have the elections. Obviously, everybody knows that. We said, hey, we've got this vacant building. Are y'all open to using that? If y'all want to use that, you're more than welcome to use it. You can use the entire building if you'd like to. If that doesn't work, let us know, we'll have it back in the boardroom. So the county, the county made the decision to have that. We followed up with them at least four different times to make sure that they were okay with that.
I called Judith, the election person up in Denton County when I went and saw what was going on. She's, she didn't say any of that. She said, you agreed to use one hundred minute, one hundred municipal drive. They, that's this building here and that building as a whole. They said, they were great, they were grateful that we offered to use the building because they have trouble getting buildings. They can't use the schools, they can't use the churches because they're all daycare. The fire station would be difficult by the number on the parking. They'd have to come down the hill to go there. And obviously, again, I'm, I'll say again, Town Hall is in Denton, outside Denton County. So they had to do someplace in Denton County, which is, leaves basically this building here, you know? And they said, we didn't know where we'd go, wherever they put us, we didn't have a choice. That's what Judith told me.
That's, that's, that's false. We have email confirmations from when staff met with them. The, the staff met with them, they gave them the option. They said that it was going to be fine. We followed up with them multiple times to make sure they were okay with it. It was their, ultimately, their, their decision. We told them if it wasn't going to work, then we could have it up here.
Yeah, well, she didn't, again, there's two sides of the story.
That's correct.
She said she was grateful just to have it. I said, have you been down here? Answer was no, she never saw me.
Didn't Judith come in here and look at all this place?
Three times.
Correct.
And the day before posting, I sent her a final email. Are you sure this space will work? Absolutely.
And she actually went to that space, right?
It's perfect, yeah.
Well, shame on her. As I said, there's two sides to the story.
Yes, sir. That's absolutely correct.
Actually made it. And I said, did you go down there and look at it? And she said, no, no.
Well.
I could have answered that question if you would have called me a couple of weeks ago. I could have, I could have answered those questions for you.
It wasn't going to change it, I was on last week's.
Just to, just letting you know, I'm always here to answer those questions for you.
So the question I have is going forward, would this room be, this section of this room be available? I know it's a pain to maneuver around, we got board meetings and that type of stuff. But I mean, I can get by with stuff set up out there.
From our perspective, based off of the feedback, I only heard and saw one, one formal complaint about that building. Mr. Flynn did give me his input and feedback as well. We can always continue to have it here. We can do so. One thing that I'll probably recommend is we'll probably try to make some modifications out here to the existing location of the clerk. That way, on presidential day, if we do have customers coming in, I can at least try to push the customers that need to make payments or interact with our staff back a little bit further. During the last election, I need you all to realize that I had to relocate staff to the other building to accommodate. That's not fair to us. We need to be able to make it accessible to our customers first. I, I think that you all would agree with that, right? So I, I think that there's some ways that we can modify. Maybe we can clean up the foyer a little bit, maybe some new flooring. We can come up with some ideas that are not as expensive to accommodate that. I, I know that we also had an ADA issue in here. So if we continue to have it in here, this is a good space to use right here in front of us. But we're going to have to either have them build some ramps or something to where people can get up and down here as well. So there, there's a few things that need to happen to really truly accommodate a gubernatorial or a presidential election. I just want y'all to know that as well.
Who, who, how many people actually still come in and pay at the window?
If anything, it's around payment day or disconnect day, that's when we see the most traffic in and out of the building.
It's around the twentieth, the twenty-first.
Third cut off there.
Elections are the first Tuesday and a.
Early voting.
Early voting.
Right.
Early voting, yeah, that's, could affect a, a week or so or two weeks, whatever it is. But how many people still come in and pay at the window?
Look at the staff report here and see.
I mean, it's, it's kind of moot issue. I mean, I agree with Bill saying is we need to find a bigger space and it's always been here. So if we can accommodate it, that'd be beneficial than spending money until we find out what we actually want to do with that building.
I mean, if, I don't, you know, if, if I knew that there was a future plan for that building, that cleared that space out and did, and would incorporate what this work was, is doing, then I would be more inclined to go with this work. But since I don't have an ultimate picture of what might happen in that building, I certainly don't want to put that money into it and come back in, in six months or two years and tear it out. And I think we all know the town's been looking for senior center, community center type, that type of stuff. I've heard some comments about, well, I'm not going to put any money in that building unless I can get a lease agreement for X number of years. But that's something to me that the Strategic Partnership Committee, you go to the town and say, hey, listen, do you want to talk about this? And let's see where, let's see where we're really at.
Well, I, I'm on the same page as there. We need to partnership with the town and say, okay, what would benefit the town the most?
Yeah.
Bingo, I don't know. You know, but still, you, you, and then they would contribute to remodeling it too. And we could do a lease, you know, a short-term lease or something on that. But I do believe we need offices along that back wall for people, you know, for our staff, you know, or the workers to go to.
I, I've tried to come up with ways that we can utilize that building internally and I haven't been able to find any.
Yeah, well, I think we need to partner with the town to see, okay, what's the need first?
Yeah.
And then see if that building, you've already done, you know, the homework on, okay, we can open up fifteen hundred square feet of it.
Or more.
Or more, okay? So there's fifteen hundred, that'll cost two hundred or something, you said?
Based off of that, yes.
Okay, so we, we have what we can open up, we have a dollar figure. We go to the town and go, okay, you want to do something with this and provide a benefit to the residents? It's going to cost two hundred.
Well, the two, the two hundred is just for a very small area of the total.
I'm, I'm looking.
It's fifteen hundred square feet.
I'm looking at the, personally, I'm looking at the big picture. I'm looking at the whole rectangle. And when I looked at the whole rectangle and I specifically contacted the general manager and asked this question, I said, where are the supporting walls in this? It shows you red around those bathrooms. I said, aren't there more supporting walls? The answer is no, it's clear span and those supporting walls are in that spot specifically because they have HVAC equipment up above there. And so it needed that, that support. So when you look at that, all of that space except that kitchen and that bathroom can be open, you could open space it. Not that I would do it, but it, if you're looking at a clean process, a clean sheet, that's all that remains within that rectangle is those bathrooms and that kitchen. Everything else, you could do a clean sheet of paper.
First priority is we have to identify future needs, what the mud needs the building for. Then you determine how much space is left after that.
But, and that, Kevin, is exactly the discussion we need to have. That's what I advocated before and I still am to, you know, is there a mud need for that building? Yes or no?
No.
And if, if the answer is no, then there's a, certainly a town need, we know that. But what does that mean? What does it look like? How much does it cost? Who's going to pay for it? It's all those things. And that's, that's a longer-term discussion with a, yeah.
Exactly. I mean, we can do by statute, I think, the attorney will back me up on that. We can by statute do recreation. We could probably do within the mud, a community center. That's not saying that I want to do it, okay? But what I'm, basically what I'm saying is if there's a partnership or something here with the town, maybe if the town has some interest, we have some diagrams, get some cost-type stuff going on, if, you know, if the town's interested. I don't, I personally do not want to get into the mode where I have personnel manning the facility and running the facility down there. I, I, that's.
Well, that's, that's why the town, the town has to be a partnership in it.
I mean, that's, and that's, that's just where, that's where I'm at right now, but.
There's been talk with the town over five years.
I think poker room would be nice.
But it never goes anywhere, so I think maybe a subcommittee.
We have a strategic partnership committee that could do something like that.
So, so before we leave this, I, I want to go back to the comment I made at the last meeting, the thought I've had ever since, and then the thought I had tonight. I don't think, regardless of whose idea it was, you know, we put them down there, they asked to go down, it doesn't matter. I don't think we put our best foot forward. That was my problem from day one, that this building is so beautiful and so spectacular. And look at the stuff Lori just did. This to me is, when they, when they walk in this building, people say, boy, this is a nice place. I like this place. We were never going to get that down there at all. And all we were doing was setting ourselves up for problems, complaints, you know? And it, so again, I'm not interested in beating the dead horse. But going forward, this is where I think we need to be. Alan, if you have recommendations about, hey, we can do some further moving around of this and that and the other thing. This to me, to our community, it's not only us, it's people that come from Denton County. I mean, this is the voice, you know, we're the, the visual front for voting in Tarrant County. And this is, this to me shows that.
Denton County and Trophy Club District, sir.
You'll find that number, how many people still pay?
It's, Kevin, I can give you a rough estimate, it's about thirty, credit card payments in person.
Thirty?
About thirty, but you gotta understand, it's not just credit cards that people are coming in person for.
Yeah.
It's account information, it's accountant setup, any accountant setup is still in person right now. So there's various reasons and we do have traffic in daily.
Yeah, and I know when there's big elections, that hallway and outside are filled up.
I mean, it, it's impossible and, you know, part of the utility building answering phones, it's impossible to, to deal with anything because you have fifty people right in front of you, sitting there waiting to come in here in and out.
I think that there's some ways that we can add some, some glass or some different partitions, maybe to where, if people are in there.
Barrier, you know, right in the front there when it's election time or something, but we'll, we'll figure something out.
Well, even something as simple, communication standpoint, it won't stop it. But if you could tell people, hey, listen, we got voting coming up, you know? If you do have a question, we'll want to answer it. If we could discourage in-person voting a little bit, half of it, I, maybe you can't. But communication about what is going to be happening during that two-and-a-half-week period? I mean, there's a lot of little pieces that can help solve this problem.
Well, either way, we, it sounds like the, the elections from now on, moving forward, it'll all be in this room, that's fine. We'll accommodate, do whatever we need to do to make that happen. The question goes back into, what are we going to do with the building next door? What direction do we have? Do, what, what do you need us to do to start moving that forward or trying to come up with an idea? Do you want us to do anymore? I was waiting for our master plans to come out to see if we needed that, potentially that space or maybe we needed another ground storage tank. You know, if we were going to need some of that space where the building was at. Even if you open this up, you're going to need more parking, you're going to have to add more restrooms. Most people, when they rent it out, they want some sort of kitchen preparatory area. So you're kind of limited on size. The previous town manager and I, he had, they had approached me about this and talked about it as a future item. But what's the next step? What do y'all want us to do with it?
Didn't the town have some survey going out to see what people wanted to see or?
There, there was a survey that went out in community center, as I recall.
That was a few months ago, that was a few months ago.
It didn't rate real high. I think half the people said, nah, it's an okay idea. And I'm not sure the, the exact numbers, but it wasn't an overwhelming, community center, rec center, however they worded it, I forgot.
Well, I thi, I think, well, if, for an approach, one of which would be, and I like, like to use a strategic partnership committee on it, would be to set up a meeting between the two committees of the town with the topic being that particular building and see what, see what the town's interested, see what, see where they're at.
They could use some of that hotel money, you know, on and bring something that contributes to people coming in or something.
It's, yeah, that, that hotel tax, yeah.
That, that's where my head's at, Alan, is I think the subcommittee needs to get together with the subcommittee over there and say, okay, let's kind of clean sheet of paper this, you know? We determine on the mud side, do we have a use or not? And if the answer is no, if, then okay, let's start talking and what are the, what are the options? And how much is it going to cost? And I mean, then, then, then the heavy lifting begins.
Exactly. You start getting, getting the plan together.
That give good direction to staff?
Huh?
Does that give?
Yeah, we'll get an email sent out to the town. I'll send it over to town manager, I'll copy the committee members and we'll start down that path to see if there's any kind of potential options for the district annex building use.
We beat that thing down pretty good.
Little bit.
Okay.
At least we know, at least we've got some sort of path.
Yep. All right, moves to item nine, items for future agendas.
Just want to make sure Tony's still there.
Tony's still there, aren't you, Tony?
I'm still here.
Good.
What do you think about that building there, Tony?
I think you guys need to figure out the highest and best use of the space. And it seems like improving a building only for an election can't be the highest and best use. So what you said before about parking or expansions of the restroom, something you can use full-time makes a lot more sense to me.
Maybe a Motel Six for you?
Well, you could put a heli pad there for the jet, you know, that, that.
There you go, I knew it was coming.
Yeah, you did. Future agenda items. Anybody have any agendas for the future?
We have that one, we just gave them, so.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Upcoming meeting dates, Tuesday, December. Upcoming meeting dates, Tuesday, December fourteenth at six-thirty, here, obviously. And, and we also talked to the last, we kind of just talked about this, discussion and action regarding meeting dates for months of January and February, January and February twenty-twenty-two, that's a little bit different. I guess I want to go back to, have, have we talked about, as we have in the past, about having a workday, planning day, half-day?
Well, I, I know that we've talked about that, I know that you've been adamant about having a special session workshop for budgeting purposes. A lot of our capital improvement needs, I've got a list of them, some things that we've pulled out from the master plan and risk and resiliency assessment, that we're working on getting some high-level proposals and opinion of probable construction and cost for you. It's not that extreme or extravagant. One of the main topics for you all for that discussion was going to be the annex building and what we do with it. So, it, it, I don't know, unless you all have something in mind that you're thinking of. I don't think it's going to be that lengthy of a discussion. If you want to have a special session to just talk about budgeting items and those capital needs, I would recommend having it on the same night, we can do it immediately following or prior to the regular board meeting, because the regular board meeting shouldn't be that long for the month of January. We can accommodate whatever you all want to do. I will say this, that the next board meeting in January is going to be on, on a holiday. So we're going to need to change that, if you all don't mind, to a different date, maybe the Tuesday, the eighteenth, is what we were going to recommend. And then that's the same thing in February.
How is it going Tuesday in December?
I said January, sorry.
But we're having it on a Tuesday in December.
Uh, that was because of the week of Christmas. It was changed to the week.
They changed Christmas this year?
Yeah, didn't you get that memo?
Because the board meeting was on the week of Christmas and vacations.
Okay. And Tuesday was.
It was discussed during the last meeting to move that the week prior. And January and February meetings are being requested to move those as well, because they fall on a holiday.
So let's go over those dates, if you would, again, Alan, you're talking about the eighteenth in January?
January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Same time.
Is there any way the nineteenth works? I have a meeting conflict on the eighteenth.
That's up to you all, it makes no difference to us.
That's a Wednesday?
Yeah.
It's a Wednesday, yes.
It's okay with me, I don't know, but, Bill?
Look at a calendar, not me.
I bought you ball that night.
Yeah.
And while we're still on January, do you want to have a special session? Or do you want to just have a discussion item during that meeting? How do y'all want to handle that?
I, you know, we're talking about budget here. We need to, you know, as you look at the big scope of things, we need to sit down and talk about things that we're looking for the budget. Our inputs on the budget side of the equation, going in from the top, are there things that we're interested in, or that type of stuff? I don't think we need to be doing vision, mission, and goals at this point, because. So.
I guess I understand the vision, mission, and goals. We've already completed that.
Yeah, I know, we just did that, but we don't.
Forward is falling in line with those.
Exactly.
Goals, right?
Yeah, it's like, okay, here they are, check, we're, we're good with those. Now for the budget, these are the things, do you have inputs for the budget? This is what the staff's looking for and at the budget at this point, you know, that type of thing. And then, and then go from there, but I, you know, I, right now, I can't see it being more than a half a day, at most.
I know that the last one we had, it, it was an hour.
Okay.
And that was on a Saturday, so.
So, so the question is, I'm not an advocate of making it part of the meeting.
Correct.
So, before is fine, could we start at, I'll just throw something out, five o'clock, and go from five to six-thirty, and if we run a little bit long?
Whenever you prefer.
Later is.
Later is better?
Yeah.
Still work, okay? You guys, I don't know.
Well, that's a problem.
I, I don't like having meetings before meetings, because you clip yourself at the end. It's like, nope, sorry, you were budgeted for forty-five minutes.
Do a pre-clip or a post-clip?
Post-clip.
Okay.
At that meeting, if we get any answer from the town, if they're interested in partnership of the, the annex, we could talk about that, so it can go into the budget, see who's.
It might be, it might be tight trying to get the subcommittee together and providing any feedback. I, I mean, I could always.
Want to know if they're interested to start off.
I can get you an answer from the town manager on that pretty easy.
Then what I hear, Alan, is saying, just have the regular meeting at six-thirty? And then, I mean, look at, it's seven-thirty, we're almost done here, it's probably going to be an hour? And then go right into the.
We can do a special session right after, and we can turn the video cameras off, and we can have a conversation on a roundtable, if, if you all would prefer.
Yeah.
Okay? Well, we'll set that on January nineteenth. So we'll have the regular session at six-thirty, and then we'll post that the special session will be immediately following, how about that?
Yeah, special session, workshop, whatever you want to call it.
Workshop, complete with pizza?
We can do so if you'd like.
Why not?
Well, I, I know that you're going to want to wear your line slippers and your flan pajama bottoms, but.
Jacket.
Smoking jacket. Okay, uh, the February, do we, did we nail it on February?
No.
Did we move that date as well?
Oh, it was the nineteenth, wasn't it?
Uh, the February meeting, that would be.
January was the nineteenth.
January was the nineteenth. January's the nineteenth.
Is that right, Tony?
Um, my calendar shows the twenty-first is your scheduled date for February.
We're back to, we were just confirming January nineteenth.
Yeah, nineteenth works great for me, thank you.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Tony, on February, the week of February, do you have any conflicts for the twenty-second, twenty-third?
Twenty-second or twenty-third work for me, so thank you.
The twenty-first.
Oh, we have early voting.
But I will tell you this, we have early voting, so now we have a conflict with that, by having it here. So, um, we could always.
What was wrong with the fifteenth?
They'll go until seven on that, they go to five, don't they?
On early voting, is it five o'clock?
Ooh, depends upon the day.
So, early voting for the Republican primary starts on the fourteenth of February and goes through the twenty-fifth. And it will be, um, for what week are we talking about?
The week of the twenty-first is the current meeting date. But isn't there, I know that the county, once they set up voting, they don't want anybody else in the room, so we really couldn't be in this room after that, right?
No, we've done it before.
Okay, so they're okay with that?
Yeah.
And, so, I'm sorry, let's go back, the, the originally scheduled meeting date is the twenty-first, correct?
February twenty-first.
Okay.
That's a holiday, so we're asking to move it.
I see.
I would just say the twenty-second.
But does that conflict, Lori, with voting?
There will be early voting that day, but they should be done in here by six, I would think.
And they shut it down at five, right?
Yeah, but it'll take them a while to run everything.
Right.
So they should be out by six-thirty then, right, if we told them?
We could, or we could delay.
Correct. We can go ahead and post at six-thirty, and if for some reason they were finishing up, we could delay.
Well, not only that, you're going to know when we get closer in what the real schedule is. So if they need to, if their standard time is forty-five minutes to clean up, then we could delay the meeting for thirty minutes. Start at seven rather than six-thirty.
Is everybody open to this February twenty-second, though?
Yep.
Tony, are you okay on February twenty-second?
Yes, that works fine, thank you.
Okay. I think that's it, and I don't see anything, any other discussion items? It is seven twenty-nine, fifty-nine minutes, we are adjourned.